So this meeting in order, trustee month, would you offer a prayer for us, please?
Let's pray. Our heavenly father, we thank you for the wonderful privilege that you've given us to gather here this evening and consider matters that truly can, by the time, affect lives in a great way. And we just pray that you'll give us a special form of wisdom that may not otherwise come upon us to make those decisions in accordance with your will. And we thank you for all of the other many blessings we have in this great life and this great country we call America. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This time we'll consider public comments. If anyone here would like to speak. Did you, well, we don't have anything signed. Sign, anybody sign up?
Just sign my name. Okay, I'm a baby. It's just great. I'm Miss Mayfield. I've got a special little letter for you. And oh, my goodness, I'm stoned. They're all in order. How are you doing? Howdy, how are you?
Thank you.
President Steve Grant. Okay. And let's see. Oh, my goodness, it would be really bad, Jason, if we left you out, but that's all right. I think you know enough about me. How could I do that? I'll make sure you get one. I apologize. I bet Ron will cheer his, pardon my, I mean, check that. How are you? I really do apologize for that. That's really not good. But anyway, there you go. How are you? Okay, can I have just a few minutes? I feel like I'm a baby in the corner here. I'm not used to, it won't move, will it? But that's okay. Want to tell you who I am, and I'm throwing my hat in the ring for TVCC, District Five. I'm going to be a trustee. I want to be a trustee. And I'm committed, dedicated, and I love this community. And I have a lot of experience. I'm very self-confident. I'm resourceful. And I want to help Trinity Valley Community College grow. I think it's so important. I have six grandchildren, and I want to help set the foundation for those six children. Because they will, I'm sure, attend here. My family has attended school here. My husband was a former alumni. And I have been on the Trinity Valley Foundation board. I have raised money, and I have been resourceful to this community. And I think I'm the best candidate. Matter of fact, I don't think so. I know. I bring a lot to the table. So I would just like to have you to know who I am, know face. And I'm here to just listen and to learn. And I hope that you'll tell your friends about me. Thank you so much. And I do officially apologize to Dr. Morrison. And I will tell you, I support everything that y'all are doing. I had a big part in selecting Dr. Morrison. And I am behind him 110%. And he's doing a great job. And y'all are doing a great job. And I want to help you do a great job where we can soar together. I am community. I am TVCC. And I want you to remember that. I love this community. And I have spent many, many years dedicating fundraising. And I'm an event planner and a fundraiser. And I can do the job. And I have time, and I'm very high energy. So remember, teacher Morton, or trustee District Five. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. All right, President Morrison, your report.
All right, I'm going to give you an update what's been happening since last board meeting. A lot of fast and furious activities on the campus. I want to give a shout out to Ruby Caldwell on the Beat cattle show team. This young lady has been tearing it up. And they're, they've actually already headed off to Houston for a big show. But she won first place, the senior champion, a few weeks ago at a contest. And our show team has been racking up top five finishes this year. So kudos to Mark and what they're doing. And I think this is the one that when they got back, had a calf. Right? They got back. I think a couple of days after they got back, this one had a calf. And mom and baby are doing well. But I think Ruby was not initially, you know, kind of raised in the show environment. And she came to TVCC and joined the show team. And she has just been exploding as a talent. So kudos to Ruby. I want to give a shout out to Radona Womack. Radona Womack recently secluded and passed the return to title four bones credentials by NASA. National Association of Student Financial Aid Administrators. She has demonstrated competency credentials and concepts and skills. Congratulations, Radona. Our financial aid office is doing, making great strides to ensure what haunts us six years ago will not happen again. So congratulations to Tanya Richardson, Dean, and what she's doing in that office in keeping us in compliance. Softball season started. This was from the opening weekend of the softball season. They are 14 and six on the season. They dropped a game to the number one team in the country, McLennan, 2-0, lost 1-1 in four against Temple, who's also ranked in the top 10. And then dropped a game against LSU Unis, which is a top five Division Two program. So Maria and her team are doing well. Start of the season. This opening weekend, they, they went undefeated. But I expect some great things for Lady Cardinals this year. It was actually happened right, I think, the weekend before our last board meeting, but I didn't have time to get the information. But a shout out to Cutter Carpenter for winning his buckle for the team roping at the Texas A&amp;M University Commerce Rodeo. Cutter is well on his way to qualify for the college finals in Casper. And I think we're sitting right now, we don't want to get too hard for the horse, but three that are looking pretty good to qualify for the college finals. And Cutter is one of those. He's been doing a great job for TVCC. This kind of, we've been having a lot of tours on campus. This group is from Crossroads. I think it's been down every week now. We have a group of high school kids coming tour the campus. So Courtney and her staff, even though she's down one recruiter, JC, her main recruiter right now, is doing a great job getting these student groups along with the Red Bar Ambassador to learn more about TVCC. And from what I've heard, that the feedback from the students has been tremendous. Give a shout out to our band, Mr. Samples, Dr. Higgins, and Dr. Holder. Some of you may know, Dr. Holder is the interim band director. They got to go down to the Texas Music Educator Association Conference, our convention in San Antonio, where our students were able to participate in for positions, first chair, second chair. And you can see some of our winners, All-State Jazz, Timothy won first chair, Connor won second chair. They're doing a great job. And he hasn't been out to the basketball games. Ashley, as the interim band director, is doing tremendous. We want to give a special shout out to one of our employees. You talk about going above and above and beyond. And I actually have the official commendation from the Terrell Fire Department. Sherry Shannon arrived on the scene of an accident as a Good Samaritan and assisted Dustin Connor with the Terrell Fire Department in the extraction and stabilization of a, someone that was, suffered an accident. And we received the official commendation last week, recognizing Sherry for her great service and giving her credit for helping Dustin render a, ensure the victim was secure and was treated until further assistance could arrive. So she not only teaches in the EMP program, but also the CNA program at the Health Science Center. And she is a graduate of our program. So congratulations to Sherry and her recognition from the Terrell Fire Department. So you may have seen, I guess it's been a week we can have now. I challenged our students in a weld off. You may not realize I have some tremendous welding skills, much like Picasso. But Daniel from the welding program, he and I had had a welding competition. He's pretty legit. I'm not going to, as a friend of mine in the welding business would say, he's slick. He won hands down. And it was a great, a great activity and great event with the students. We Facebooked live it. We had hundreds upon hundreds of people that have viewed that little competition. And it was a great time with the students and highlighting what they learned in the welding program. So I am going to have to brush up on my skills. A few weeks ago, we had some untold stories on campus. Members of our social science department came together and wanted to put an event on campus. So we had three ladies that came and shared their stories. And what they've overcome to be where they're at in life. And it was a great opportunity for our students to hear from others and about hard work and sacrifice. I just want to give a shout out to our social science faculty members that were involved, taking the initiative to put on events like this for our school. We had members from the community that were there as well. Obviously, you see Donna Bennett holding cork here. That's kind of a little bit of pun on words since former DA, our prosecutor attorney. This was some pictures of our learning day that we recently held, and our faculty and staff coming together, talking about ways to help advance college. And great, great training that took place and just more information on how the steps that we're taking to make improvements at Trinity Valley. A few weeks back, we launched our strategic planning process. Our process is going to be growth rooted in tradition with a promise to educate and inspire the future generations of East Texans. So this was our initial kickoff for our strategic planning. Over the coming months, you're going to see activities, survey, community meetings, where we work to write the new strategic plan for Trinity Valley Community College. Want to give a shout out to our dual credit. They've been very active out visiting schools. We're going to see a growth in our numbers from Palestine, as more Palestinian students are going to be taking dual credit with us. And also as we finalize some relationships with Terrell ISD. So as we move into fall, we're going to see, right now, we're serving about 34 to 36 schools. We'll probably adding a couple more schools by the fall. But really want to let, kind of recognize Mary and her staff. They were invited to present at the NASEP conference, and they joined up at Temple College. And they presented over empowering rural hospitals to increase dual credit enrollment. Mary, if you haven't met Mary, Mary is extremely gunghole in advancing dual credit education in our service area. And she's doing a remarkable job. Big shout out to our SGA. I think we just need to rename ourselves Title Town for the number of titles that we have at Trinity Valley. Our SGA won their seventh consecutive regional chapter of the year title, the ninth in the last 10, 10 years. I got to find out what happened with the voting that one year. I think that we were, we need to check that. But think about that as our student leadership group, seven consecutive titles, nine in 10 years. These young people that represent our Student Government Association are doing a remarkable job in bringing light to the leadership training and education that Trinity Valley offers. So good job to Courtney and JC and all those that are involved with the SGA. Special recognition to Genesis Foreman. She was nominated for the Student of the Year. So it's just a privilege to be nominated. She did finish second. But that's, think about it, as an individual student and all the students that you're competing throughout our region for Genesis to receive this recognition. And I want to share a couple of things about Genesis and her accomplishments. President Genesis Foreman has been nominated for the Texas Junior College Student Government Association Region due to her exceptional leadership and dedication to help her fellow SGA peers. This is a quote, "Genesis is probably the best leader I could ever ask for as a freshman." PBC freshman and SGA delegate, Hadi Davis, said, "She sets the standards for what is expected of us. She is kind and supportive and always all ears. She cares about her student government family. Genesis is a genuine, genuine and honest. She slays." For those that are not as hip, I mean, she rocks out. Another quote about Genesis, this is from Genesis herself, "SGA is a big reason why I'm at TVCC." It has caused a huge personal growth. It has caused a huge personal growth for me. I've grown into the person I am because of SGA. College and adulting can be rough, but it's nice to find friends that are there, care about you, support you, become a big family. A lot of great things happening to me are due to being a part of SGA in Trinity Valley. So.
Who's the sponsor of that program?
Courtney Skous. And JC Cotton helps her as the recruiter. Give a shout out to online student Lexi Aiken. She is dancing her way to New York City. She moved to New York, making it big. And her biggest goal, she's going to accomplish her biggest goal this April, when she auditions for the New York City Rockettes. So let's say our prayers and wish Lexi good luck come April. Over the weekend, we had an alumni game for the Lady Cardinals. We had about 14 or 16 alumni in town to kind of celebrate the Lady Cardinals. And D-Mac from last year's team was able to make it, and she got to receive her ring from last year. Rings were purchased for last year's national runner-up team by a private source. And, and she was extremely excited about receiving that ring. I've been, I've received an award. I'll be traveling to two places, actually. I'll be going to Corpus Christi in a couple of weeks, where I'll be inducted into the Texas Hall of Honor. And then I will be traveling to Orlando in April as a recipient of the Paragon Award for New Presidents. I appreciate and I'm very humbled by Tha- 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 Kappa and their nomination for this award and by the organizations for selecting me for this award. Any questions before we get to an update from Rich Crosby about workforce training? Folks, there are so many things that happen from the last board meeting to next week. It's almost impossible to cover everything. There's just a vibrant life happening on the campus of Trinity Valley. So. Rich, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about workforce education. And for some of you may not be aware of this, we created a workforce department last fall to focus on customized training education for industries. And Rich is the director of that. And Rich is also now the interim director of workforce, associate vice president for workforce education. So Rich, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to be here and talk with you about some of the exciting things that we have. First thing is, we are currently reviewing all of our workforce programs, trying to streamline them so that it makes it easy for students when they arrive at Trinity Valley to not only understand what it is they are going to get in this educational endeavor, but to also help them transfer to a university or get jobs, whichever pathway they choose to take. We're going to make it easier for them to decide and along the way. This is a collaborative effort, not just with workforce, but it's touched student services and a lot of different departments around campus. And it's just pretty exciting to see everybody working together. On March the 28th, we're going to meet the division chairs and the instructional APs. We're going to meet with our counterparts over at UT Tyler on their campus for a transfer summit. Again, we're trying to make it easier for students who arrive here, give them a nice smooth path to getting, get to that next level. So we'll meet with them about how our classes align with their bachelor's degrees and with their bachelor of arts and class science degrees. We'll also be doing some meeting. We're not just reviewing workforce programs up here. We're doing workforce programs everywhere. That's including TD CJ. We'll have a meeting on March 7th with a few representatives from TD CJ. We want to talk about Level Two certificates and also bringing back the AA group. Again, the inmates down there, they're able to get a bachelor's degree and a master's degree while they're in there. They, they're long enough and got that disc. And so we can have transfers down there also. So there's a couple of things that we're going to talk about and revamping some of those programs. We continue to look at our programs in Terrell and to, there's a lot of need on the industrial side as, wearing the director of corporate training hat, we've gone out and talked to industries. And they're looking for programs. And as we talk about the building plans, we are going to have a couple of workforce roundtables in March. The first one, six, with Terrell EDC, and then on 12. And as I was on my way to scrap and this afternoon, I got a phone call. And all the EDCs in Kaufman want to meet us on March the 14th and discuss opportunities at the Kaufman Center in Kaufman and Public Community in Terrell.
That's every EDC, every community that has an economic development commission is all going to rally together in Kaufman to, to learn more about what Trinity Valley can provide. And so we can learn, also learn about what we need to be providing to meet those industry needs.
Also, we want you to mark on your calendars, March 6th, March 19th, and March 20th. We're going to be having job fairs on each campus. Not only job fairs, but the transfer fairs also. So we've got a good list coming in right now. I had a couple of folks contact me out of Palestine. They're eager to come to campus, see what our students have to offer, and also very eager to offer our students work and employment, those gainful work. So mark your calendars, March 6th will be in Palestine. On March 19th, we'll have a job fair here in Athens. And on March the 20th, Terrell will have their job fair. That's all I have for you right now. Any questions?
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Philip, did you want to provide a Roman report update?
I can give you a quick update. We'll be talking about that. Last time we, when we talked about headcount, we were up to over 300 students for the spring compared to last spring. That number is 401 now. So we're continuing to climb. And the board usually likes to know where that growth is coming from. Now, we have a quick breakdown of that. That's all growth here in Athens. We had a 24% growth in Palestine, 8% growth in Terrell. We were at even at the AGSC. At High School of Dual Credit, we were up 16%. And in online, we were up 7%. Where we didn't do as well was the TD CJ, where we fell 40%. Had we had the normal numbers from TD CJ, we would have been up to 500 new students. Or 500 students over where we were last good second time. So things are getting better.
What does our total in Roman?
Our total before headcount is 5,666.
Is the health center capped now? Is that why we don't grow?
There are new programs coming online. And there are some, some of those are going to help us, I believe. So we actually, we'll see.
Well, you always say a little bit of dip. Sometimes it's hard to tell in the spring because you're going to have students that don't matriculate. I mean, they had large kind of enrollment in the fall, but then it's a tough program. And sometimes some don't matriculate as much as they did in the years past.
Some of those programs and programs are really hard. And then for a reason, we want people to go to school there for the medical profession. We want them to be good.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Morrison.
Is there any kind of information in reference to why we not growing at the one that you indicated?
The TD CJ?
Yes.
There's been some other people in that program. To be perfectly frank with you, I'm not sure that the numbers you've had before will be accurate. So that's been part of the issue as well. And I know Jason probably knows more about this than I do because you work more closely with the TD CJ folks than I do.
There's, there's a lot of processes with RPD. We have made some changes, getting the testing, PSI testing more readily available. They were only doing it once or twice in a semester. And Sherry can, Sherry, once or twice in a semester. So students, it can take 90 days for a student to say they're interested, interested in a program before they're actually anywhere near to get enrolled. There's a lot of factors in the decline of the programs. A lot of them were not completing credentials to begin with. So trying to restructure the program so they can get credentials, you know, during the time there, you deal with the issues, they get transferred out. There was a time that we probably were not as actively going out to the centers and providing counseling to the students as directly as we needed to be. Those things have been taking place since Randy Vandertoon has taken the helm in January.
So if a student comes in, he's in the program, and he get transferred out, is that a negative hit or positive?
Well, since we're funded by credentials, that'll be a negative. Because if they go and they go to another system, they're allowed to enroll in another school because there's 13 schools that participate. They'll, and if he finishes with them, he's there long enough and he finishes, they'll get the credit for it.
But isn't that something that we're not in control of?
No.
We're not in control of them. But we hit negatives and they go somewhere.
Well, it's, it's just like if we had a student and they completed 57 hours and they dropped out of school and they don't transfer, we'll see no performance funding. Now, if they transfer and they completed the 15 hours of core, we'll see performance funding. But let's say they just dropped out of school at 57 hours. That's the tuition money they collected, we all collect.
We track up to 57 hours.
Well, I'm just, I was using as a.
Yes, but my point, if we go up 57 hours shattering that student and they leave.
We better track them down. Yeah, we better be tracking them down. But I was using that kind of, that it can go all the way up to that point. And if they just say they're done with school and don't go, do not go anywhere. Well, the performance funding, unless we can produce a credential.
Right.
Now, for our workforce programs, we have levels of credentials. We have level, OSA, level one, level two. Matter of fact, we had a discussion last week about creating a general education certificate for a student that completes a general education course. They would at least be eligible to receive that certificate if for some reason they had reached school. So it's learning the formula, finding ways to make sure we have stop out positions for students if they don't finish.
We can stop that. If they transfer out, okay, you're going to hold back. You just can't just leave.
Well, we got to, we got to ramp up. If they do transfer, we got to ramp up our reverse transfer initiatives. That's having relationships with these four years and sign agreements that they work with this. Most of the transfer agreements we have, the four years are supposed to report back to us when students complete a certain level of hours. So we can work with the student to get them to complete. The hardest thing is trying to secure that upfront because you still have to get the students permission to award them a degree. So you try to secure that upfront through your application process. And hey, as you do transfer, we want to be able to work with you to issue a degree.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other question? All right, hearing none. You have before you the minutes of our last meeting, which was held on January 29th, 2024. It was, this has been in the portal and in your packet. But here, any discussion on this? You got a second from Dr. Easton. All in favor? I'm all against. Eyes happy. Thank you. Mr. Hopkins, consider the business and financial treatment investment reports for December 2023.
I'm going to talk a little bit points again about the FAD program, but looking at your revenue, I do want to point out a few things. We're down in tuition again. I believe that most of that is because of the losses, tuition losses in the past program. Tuition losses in the past program. Some of that is also in the bookstore because of the books that we also can't charge those students for. Uh you heard me talk about the the state appropriations. That's uh but a lot of that at this point is because of the free pay system versus the ten page. We've gotten. Uh had fifty percent, I think it was October, we get another twenty-five percent in February, I think last November, June. So that'll be a difference all year. Property taxes, I did want to talk about, we we have not lost two point four million in property taxes. Uh Kaufman has had some issues with their bookkeepers. Uh they lost some folks and so some of the items that they would normally approve in December. Bled over into January and the reason I wanted to point that out in January, uh. You look at your sheet, we go from eight million to twenty million in January. Uh and looking at last January, we had eighteen million. Uh in property taxes, this year we have twenty million point one. That's one point million dollar higher than prior January. So uh that's a long way to say that. Just some accounting gymnastics that uh maybe should go down. Uh. The rest of the financial there, I I didn't really have a bunch else. Uh I just, again. You see, we're down two point seven million. Again, I think a lot of that is bookkeeping. And the FAS program again, which I will talk more about it. We'll uh just drop down to the best for support. Yeah, uh. Where you stand, uh we've got a lot of money that's uh we're spending out of cap reserve on some part project. But even given that, you've got, still got thirty-one million. Uh and and don't forget that the amount that we transferred after the audit uh won't show up in February. Well, that amount's still coming uh to be seen later. Next slide is. Want to give you a minute to look at that. Those are some of the things that uh. Palestine multipurpose, the workforce norm. Uh so the projects going on out there in Palestine. You might have any questions about that? Next to the last page, are you paying what's over twenty-five thousand? Uh. You have any questions, my distinguished colleagues, to write, I'll answer. If not, let's talk about FAS for a minute on the next page. We can give you an update. These these numbers that I'm going to talk to you about, we have not been paid yet, the meeting is anybody else. Uh the CFO meeting, CFO's in Texas, forenaming board was there. And basically, they don't have their payment system working yet. All the schools, including us, we're to the point where we're about to certify. The final list, as y'all can imagine, we've gone back and forth, back and forth, back. Who's the fast student, who's not? But the bottom line there is I can go into detail if you want, uh but the bottom line is basically. After all the dust settles, uh we've only lost seventy-one thousand dollars uh once we get paid for us. Uh with these fast students, because we can't charge them anything. And so Stephanie and her group have made a comparison here of. Prior to FAS, you know, kind of how that worked, uh when you tuition fees would have been one million, one twenty-five under both scenarios. And then, you know, we used to waive hours and things like that. So in under this scenario, we have to waive it all and we can pay fifty-five dollars the credit out. So all things being said, and this does not include. Uh you know, any sort of performance funding or anything like that that Jason was just talking about that we might get later on. But these are just the straight up numbers uh in the operating budget that uh would have happened. And there's a breakdown there that kind of shows you, but when I hear me talk about tuition loss and and things of that nature, that's the tuition. That we didn't collect, but on the flip side, we will get fifty-five dollars now. Is it, I just want, we want to put this in front of you because and this is the bottom. You know, it's only February, uh they weren't ready to go with this program when it rolled out. And so everybody's been struggling. Trying to catch up and get everybody certified and get this done, so. Did I answer any questions?
David, or most of the FAS participant, if like some school districts are just labeled, I believe Athens is in it, the whole district's fast, is that true? Or is it, or is it, is it on an individual case by case basis?
Yeah, what the schools have to certify to the TEA. Because it's a coordinate board, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but in the coordinate board, we send our list to them and they say, who's a fast student, who's not?
It's individually.
Yeah.
Uh just because the school is uh recognized as a free or reduced, free and reduced lunch or a free lunch school. They still have to be individually certified, which we only had a few issues where parents thought their student was fast and. School might have told them that, oh yeah, they're fast, but we're like, no, you're not on the list. This is a list from TA. Now, on the flip side, we had some parents that were excited to learn. The school told them their kid was not fast, but they were excited to learn their kid was on the list. So they were relieved because they didn't know how they were going to pay the tuition and things like that. And we made the decision um last fall when this came out late. Not to try to renegotiate with every single ISD on MOU. Let's see how much we actually lose on the books in these fees. Because these students are going to complete fifteen hours of core, they're going to complete certificates because they're they're locked in. Population. So our return in performance is several millions of dollars. For these dual credit students for completing degrees, certificates, or fifteen hours of core. So a hundred and seventy-one, you strap like that over two, two semesters. It'll dip in the spring because you typically dip in spring and enrollment anyway. So if we settle around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The money that we make in performance is going to vastly outpace that. And it also shows goodwill on our part to these ISDs that, hey, we're not, because many of these ISDs would had passed with. Pass the cost on to their students. Well, they can't do that. These students cannot be charged anything. And so as to kind of be a good steward in our role in as a community college at these ISDs. We made the decision that we're going to see where this lands this first year. Yeah, now, when we first talked about this and David and Stephanie and I were talking. We were estimating that eighty percent of our students were going to be fast. It turned out to be fifty-nine percent were actually fast. That actually surprised, I think, a lot of us that it was only two, less than two-thirds were fast. We were taking on the fact that many of our schools are free lunches, that there was going to be a substantially more. Uh fast population. Of course, that does tell me there's a lot of students that still need to be served. Uh in our school districts. So that's got us thinking about some other endeavors to work with these school districts in order to serve them because. I know there's more that more students that are missing out on some type of education. Um but I think, you know, like we we told those superintendents upfront, they, hey, we're going to, we're going to eat this. Uh we don't know where it's going to land. It is under what uh David and I had estimated because we were basing on eighty percent. Uh I think this is something that a good, good stewardship with our ISDs that we will probably continue to do. Unless we see where that number goes and it's not controllable by what we're receiving in this performance funding. So.
That's, that's all I guess.
Any other questions for David?
Uh you mentioned the transfer that we do forthcoming for the gap result. Which was already starting to wait in the last audit, complete, which was only presented last month. Uh how much was that going to be?
Uh three point two to five, a three, three point two.
Yeah, three million. Okay, okay. And then second thing, tax collections, around ninety-eight percent, are they about distorted?
Uh yeah. What I've seen over the years, not just here, but in the city, you normally wind up collecting. In that year, somewhere between ninety-six to ninety-eight percent of your assessment. But you know, on all the the sheets and I know y'all have probably seen these over the years, they've got all the past two years. What's a little deceiving about that is uh those numbers get really low. I mean, you collect more of the money, but the other thing that you find is that sometimes the the. The counties will lose lawsuits or things, you know, that will flush through that same receipt. But that's been my experience is where you wind up landing about ninety-seven, ninety percent every announcement year.
Thank you.
Aren't there a lot more uh people contesting it and more lawsuits being filed now than they have been last, last year?
Right, well, that is, as y'all heard, you all remember during the budget process, that was uh when we had the certified thing that we did, and I told you it was within. A few thousand dollars of my budget. I was like, thank you, Lord. But because we've we've had uh. One of the years, almost a billion dollars of the protests across all the counties at the time they certified. Used to, that was, that was not even heard of when they gave you their certification on July twenty-fifth, they were done. It's just not possible because of the volume. Now, I think, I think that's.
Thank you. Uh next down on business is contingency. Uh fun budget adjustment, Dr. Morrison?
Yes, uh we're going to break Marcus in today. As our newest member of our cabinet, he's going to present to you about a vehicle purchase.
Maybe keep a purchase now or this is a budget.
Oh.
Y'all want to do that one? They're related, but not just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's a good, that's a good way to type it.
Okay, go ahead, David.
This budget adjustment, we have a vehicle, uh kind of our license that. We we've been more vehicles than we are willing to purchase because we didn't know what we'd been swamped. One of the things that you see is a one ton truck that we did not get a bid on last year than we did this time. So what request is going to be if if Marcus's recommendations are approved? Is that we take the one ton, pick up forty-nine thousand dollars out of contingents. The other vehicles are are already in the operating budget. But we felt like if Marcus didn't go into the details that it was important to go ahead and get this and and even detail that, but. If the project's approved, this is what we're looking to move that much out of.
And and the the use of the one-ton truck, this is to replace an aging three-point ton. That is inadequate to all large horse and cattle trailer. Uh and then the one-ton truck could also be used by the department to all uh media trailer to supporting events as well. So. You'll see in the later vehicle purchase recommendation, uh the one-ton truck.
We will hear a motion to approve the recommendation that the move the funds out of the contingency to purchase the vehicle. Which made the second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, consider and discuss uh you know, approved Palestine expansion to TDCJ contract five.
All right, we have Corey Frencher here with this presents that.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. We have bid out contract five back in Oxford and it came in over the budget. And so what we've been doing is we've been meeting with the contractor, meeting with TVCC staff. How you get the price down where we feel like, one, to get close to budget, can we get TVCC the best price we can? And also taking consideration maintenance issues and how it was bid, make sure everything was good and the. Maintenance staff and everybody's okay with it. So what we've done is we've come up with value engineering, I've heard that. I remember before, so what we've done is the contractor proposes what he thinks could be an equivalent type of systems. And what it was mostly was the HVAC. So the HVAC come back, we're going to use rooftop units. Instead of a central type of unit that exchanges more air. So when we do that, run the numbers, looking at about three hundred thousand dollars and saying it's there. And some of the plumbing and electrical is going to save some more, about another hundred and forty thousand dollars. So. Overall, when we value engineer everything, we save up four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. So the contract price was bid at two million five hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And we take out the four hundred and forty-two thousand, these are contract prices, but now two million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So where does that equate with budget wise? So when you run the number, when we ultimately started this whole project and we come up with an overall number. We take into account, there was some savings on some of the other contracts. It puts us less than ten percent where we are now. It's actually around six percent. Been really tough trying to get what these costs are going to be in the positive industry, but it's hard right now. Um inflation, I heard the term is just to speak.
So. First, I. This was finishing up, this was good, pretty, so bad. We brought it in. Um it looks like it's working out. It certainly is. Thank you, get here, Paul. But to bring our minds back to the place, that's what we expected to spend. All in and done and ready to open the doors. Would would you review that number compared to these elements when we put together?
Yes, sir.
Where you see us coming in versus where we we expected to be.
Yes, sir. So our our all-in total construction cost initially was six million. Three hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. And now our all-in price with this change order is six million seven hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And six cents. Uh we're also working with Athens still to see what the roof adjustments fix with rooftop units also. There is going to be an increase, but it's not going to be significantly larger than this overall crisis. Have to look at a change order on that too, but there's still work on the ground. There's some coordination between structural engineers. And mechanical engineers. To answer your question, uh we're we're within ten percent of what we projected and we we are of the budget.
Are there different operational dynamics that we're covering there?
Yes, sir. There there. So the way the rooftop units are, a local contractor can actually work on them. One, either out of Athens or out of Palestine. Uh the different type of system, which initially was designed for a larger occupancy. Is more of a a total one hundred percent air exchange. Through the oxygen levels when you have a large capacity of people. And going back in their value engineering, we determined that we probably wouldn't fill the capacity that we initially thought. So. That helps on that. To answer your question, you'd have to come out of Dallas to work on type of system to exchange. Yes, sir. What about utility? Utility costs will be cheaper with this because you're not trying to heat hundred and sixty degrees air. July, August, you know, you can ask for your turn air to the rooftop means.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you. So I hear a motion to consider the acceptance of the expansion and approve of the uh contract five. Dr. Easton makes a motion?
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Monk. Um all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Considering discussed approval of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, collegiate college calendar.
Yes, before you, in your packet, you have the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar. Yeah, thanks to Tammy and Caroline for working and along with academic side. Making sure we have all appropriate times for compliance and meeting, meeting all the compliance, what need to be made for academic instruction. Making sure we have all appropriate times for compliance and meeting meeting all the compliance, what needs to be made for academic instruction.
Here a motion to approve the academic calendar is presented. Any second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Discuss TVCC Police Department's rate for profiling uh report.
All right, Marcus, you ready to present that?
Every year, the chief administrators of law enforcement agencies are required to uh submit a report on uh departments' racial profiling uh in addition to a comparative analysis uh both to uh T-CO, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, as well as to their governing body, the governing board, for view what we are doing here. Uh and this is in relation to motor vehicle stops in regard to gender and ethnic population. And so the TVCC Police Department is also required to type comparisons in that issue of court. So you'll see that attached, both the raw numbers, the report and then the analysis as well. Be honest with my, well now starting my work, because I didn't have a frame of context for this, so I looked back at the previous three years, these reports in comparison. And while the the number of uh stops varies quite a bit from five a year to thirty-eight. Um it it was another year where it was thirty-three. Uh the breakdown of the of of gender and ethnic uh breakdown of those stops was relatively uh the same in those years, so I think that's an important takeaway from a report like this. And also it was encouraging to see that uh force was not needed to be used in any of these stops. And uh there were no narcotics or alcohol uh violations in these stops as well, so. This is submitted as information, uh no recommendations or questions.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Next order of business is to uh consider and discuss travel and business expense policies and procedures and board manual.
Bringing me now, as as both departments are already heavily working on their budgets. Uh but some of this we haven't updated since uh I think I got here two thousand nineteen. Uh our recommendation uh is as follows, we want to adopt the general services administration rates for meal and incidental per day, not not logical meal incidental. This would be effective September first, first, twenty twenty-four. We don't have this built into the current budget. Uh the last time we adjusted per day was nine, one of nineteen. Uh and it's not adjusted based on the location, whether it's Waco or Austin or wherever else. Uh GSA standard rate right now is fifty-nine dollars if if I on the GSA schedule, if the city or our county is not listed, we use the standard rate. And I gave you a copy of the GSA rates for Texas and the different towns. And other changes in the policies, I marked it up related to harness guidelines. And and some changes that we're, you know, maybe looking at as we uh adopt a a travel uh traffic software. That was, that's the first thing we wanted to discuss, the second thing is at the same time, uh we wanted the student meal per day, like for athletes and people traveling. We want to take that for ten dollars a meal to twelve or thirty-six a day. Again, September first, twenty-fourth. And and the third item is the board manual, we realized that there's a difference between the board manual talks about the board, the board being paid per day. The actual policies that are enforced talk about the board agreement, reimbursement for actual expenses, so. At this point, from it all, I'm trying to do is get the board manual to match policies. If you guys wanna talk about policies later, we can do that, but it's not on the agenda tonight. So those are three recommendations, uh so.
Uh for some reason, I thought we had, we raised the first, maybe it was in the budget for athletics, the per day per meal this this year.
We did that a while back, but it was some drastic low, I think it's eight dollars.
Yeah, 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 but we did raise it in this year's budget, didn't we?
I mean, I don't believe I can all read, but I just don't know how an athlete can be this. You know, see anyway, I mean, those guys. If I go, if I go to one burger, it's twelve, fifteen dollars. And I don't, I can't even worth saying, you must say me, so I mean, I'm just, my question is, is this?
Well, I I would open that up, I mean.
Answer, I don't know what's reasonable or certainly, I mean. Just knowing what basket it does, God, I agree, it just seems.
Our coaches do a good job of making sure they go to the right places and they call ahead to get, you know, some discounts and things of that nature. I mean, obviously, you know, a lot of times they get water so they can get more on the meal and things like that and think, I mean, it's tight nowadays when you when you think about trying to to just go to yourself, like you said, go to water burger to eat. But this is a improvement from, you know, ten dollars, you know. Sometimes they can save a little more on the breakfast and use that for the the dinner, breakfasts are a bit bit cheaper than the dinner meals.
I hope a part of you, you guys are there with them and they gotta know what's going on, but it seems uh a little snug still.
It probably is, but.
Athletes will appreciate you, two dollars, I promise you that. They will appreciate.
Too, but I just, this is like the days to be noticed that. Today's environment, it was food costs, I'm not sure.
To answer, I mean, to ask some question, uh like what the Dr. Charlie's talking about. Do we have any idea what other community colleges do on per day on this, I mean?
In in my experience, where where I came from, the average cost was ten dollars. And I think uh that's been pretty close to what I've seen in Texas, but there, I mean, you're feeding a two-hundred-pound guy a single cheeseburger and a a small fry, I mean, it's. I think the one way we could look at it, if we wanna open it up and and look at it is not so much what is per meal, but say a flat cost per day. Cause that way, you know, you can get cheaper meals sometimes at breakfast than you can at lunch and dinner. They tend to be the higher cost meals, so if we wanted to just look at a flat rate, right now, we're looking at thirty-six. If we wanna say they're forty a day or forty-two a day, then that would compensate any increased cost they would have for evening meals, which like I said, that is historically your more expensive meal, you know.
I'm gonna be very young, I I don't, I'm not trying to change the world here, I just, I think that, you know.
I appreciate your.
Fast food meal has doubled, you think you got that for fifteen or twenty percent, it's double. And and so I just when I think these guys are playing football, an offensive lineman is gonna eat, you know. But anyway, I'll I'll whatever we need to.
Concerning the team, hoping we have to move on the bus with the milk and snacks, they're bringing, you know, different things that they can eat while they're on the bus. And that does supplement what they get when they're in restaurant. And a lot of a lot of people are volunteering to make their effort, and I mean, my life and I will, these will be candy, so so we do that kind of thing.
Yes, sir.
Are you advocating just set a a daily at thirty-six?
I would.
And that is since three meals, it allows them to pick off the cheaper one for one.
I mean, that's the best guess, if they set it for thirty-six a day and let us monitor it this year and then come back. I mean, the problem is food costs have in the last twenty-four months.
That just allows, it's an eight-dollar breakfast, rather than there's there's no money to line anyone for this.
I mean, I I don't wanna be wasteful here, I don't. I don't want them to be wasteful, but they need to be.
Well, the the meals are purchased by the coaches, you know, typically depending on the size of the team, they'll call ahead. They'll have things already kind of leave planned, or when you got your smaller teams like basketball, softball. They typically show up, go through the line. There are, hopefully, there are a lot of good places that do cock meals for coaches and bus drivers and things like that and give a discount. Uh it depends on how big of a town that you're in. Uh but yeah, if we set it, say, thirty-six a flat rate, give them a little bit more discretion throughout the day. Let us track it again for the year and then we can come back next year and say, how did this work out for them? But I will give credit to our coaches, they do call ahead and try to work uh deals on getting meals.
You know, we've had issues, I know at the high school level in the past, for booster club or whatever, be willing to pay, but they weren't allowed to, there were some restrictions, and I don't know if we're still dealing with that before we've been IO and all that anymore, but anyway, I just go make sure and take care of it.
The football team does like to go along with me, but that is, they really do.
Do you think at budget time, we might have some additional information regarding, you know, actual what we had this year and projections?
If, yeah, if we wanna disapprove it right now for thirty-six and while we're going through the budget and we feel like there needs an adjustment, we can bring it back.
That's that's.
But if we wanted to set.
Chairman, he'll accept the motion to eleven hundred and twelve dollars and just establish a native cap, thirty-six. I'll be happy to offer that money.
What you made, second, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Uh considering discussed two two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five vehicle purchase.
Yes, I got in front of you, the list of vehicles, uh we're recommending approval to the purchase. To uh bolster the college's fleet. We already discussed the one-ton pickup and the use of that and the use of contingency funds. And why that is, the one-ton pickup, in addition to that, uh the white inside fifteen-passenger van, which I'm learning is very helpful in transporting uh flight teams. Uh two new white full-size half-ton pickups, a new white full-size eight-passenger SUV. Uh white mid-sized SUV and two white mid-sized pickups, uh and then the attachment behind that, you see the the tabulation, tabulation with the highlighted uh bits uh we related to purchase yellow for each of those. On the, sorry, there's no page numbers on that, tabulation on the fourth page. Most expedition, the Chastain toward Houston, Texas. Uh we neglect to put it there, that's, it is a co-op contract, it's by board, seven-two-four dash two-four. And then also I would just hope that you know, the two Colorado's would be uh used for the police department.
I got one question. Uh on the expedition that we're looking at. I'm assuming from the way it should be raised, the short one is not enough. One of them says expedition. This is really nice condition. And then we'll transport AP, do not carry anything. Having transported full grown people for suburban or whatever else, I mean. I don't know if that's the difference or not, I'm just, I'm asking the question, and then do we have a long one in the fleet? If you need one, we can carry it back, because if you got eight people in this car, and they're, you know, they're these are, mostly are younger people, they're not gonna be big, so bust them, but.
I don't know, I cut my head, to be honest.
All I'm asking is put the thought in it, if you need the long one, if I want, let me think about it. Because, I mean, I've gotten places before where they didn't have the long one I thought to have and you know, we had to rent another car to carry bags, so and and I don't, I don't know how we're gonna be using it, I don't know. You know, is this, some people train it for us for a little day trip, or are they gonna even take the luggage with them? And I know full grown men in my department with suitcases got gloves that will not fit very good. So I just gonna bring it up while we're doing it, cause I I couldn't tell from looking at it, and I'm gonna assume it's the short one, and that's why it's cheaper. Uh and if that's what we want, it's fine, just make sure it's what you want or need, let's just say, what you need. I'll bring it up, I'll do what you need to.
The reason I wondered about a foot impact is because the 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 three max, the list, we range sixty-five, sixty-two. Or, you know, make sixty-two, and then the one drops all the way down to fifty-five. Or if they were all identical, meaning max, means how long it is, you couldn't think of a, you know, a ten grand express. So I actually wondered if that's, I mean, if that's like the, you know, the Grand Royale versus the.
I don't know, you know, I'm I'm not sure if it was ever even, you know, with like your own heads. It's just like the suburban in Europe, because what, it's longest.
But I think we could pause on that one, take action on the rest and get clarification.
And I don't care which one you get, you got what you need.
Cause I know the suburban's definitely gonna be longer than the traditional expedition.
But the traditional expedition, but the max, I believe, I think it's the length.
I think Charlie's right.
My, I've 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 been in both of my usual boat and if you got eight adults in there and they're taking anything with them, they.
I'm pulling up the picture of it now.
Probably one thing could, um the bids like the, one of the maxes from a local dealer straight up through the uh sealed bid.
Yes.
But two of the others are on uh co-op contracts.
Yes.
And sometimes you will get that price variation.
And this, but what what are we allowed discretion on that, it's not, not much money difference between them.
Okay.
The bags, I've got the max and the the same.
It's three thousand dollars, isn't it?
Yeah.
Says the max has a longer wheelbase.
That's what I'm talking about, that's exactly the difference, so that's that's what I'm talking about. It's not quick, it's late. So the max is equivalent to a suburban, the plan is addition is equivalent to a top. You can get eight people in there.
You get ten of me in there.
You can't get much else.
So if it's, if it's the max, the that you can take the lowest bid on the max of fifty-four dollars.
That's what I would.
Or uh because it's the other one.
Three pound baller, I have this at this time.
I mean, I mean, you may, you may say we're just gonna use it without any luggage, but then as soon as you do that, you're gonna need to place the luggage, they're gonna go to Loveberry somewhere and spend the night.
Well, they'll get useful, there, though, you may have people, just four people going between campuses. But you might have coaches out there who can prove. You know, it's just a play.
You know, and it'd be different if you have, if you had several of them free, they don't need all the long, but if you don't have long ones in your fleet, I I just reflect that. I just.
Give us the discretion to choose between.
I will, that's what I, that's the difference, because Chastain, you guys decide.
Okay.
Chastain's got the low, low is two bids, and one of the packs.
In some cases.
Yeah, you can, yeah. That's why you don't get any bids.
Do we want to entertain a motion to accept the recommendations purchased with with the exception of having the discretion of either getting the max one uh for fifty-four-nine or the one which is we uh for fifty-one thousand. nine, or the one that is, we, for fifty-one thousand dollars?
That one.
Just the hammerland, Dr. Easton seconded. Uh, any discussion?
I want to say that I'm, I'm not sure whatever, we had to go into that, and propose to compel the deal with numbers, obviously. Right, I'm real happy to see the parity we came to, arriving at a lot of our local taxpaying theaters that support us, uh, or receiving bids. And we, we've always tried to do that, but at times, uh, it just didn't yield much. We've had to buy boards, co-op purchasing things and all that. So I'm real happy to see that all of these, I think, except that one deal, were coming from leaderships that are in our division, and I'm, I'm sure that's true.
Well, I think y'all, y'all should know that every time we do this, every dealership in the district, it's packed. We can't make a bid.
That's right.
And we're not even required to do that, but we do.
You're trying really hard to do it.
Yeah, they pay taxes here. So we have a motion, uh, I mean, first, uh, made and seconded. Uh, do we have, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Moore, to consider and discuss increase in dorm and parking fees.
All right, uh, Dr. Parnell's going to present to us, propose an increase in some of our fines, and provide some additional information.
I will, I will let you know that one of the least safer things I have to do is bring a request for students through the door, and, um, and I try my best not to ever have to do that. One of the things I'm charged with is trying to make sure that their site can secure as possible when they live on campus with us. Um, and we've got, we've got four things on the agenda that we're asking you to allow us to raise, to, you know, to refund. Understand, we haven't raised these fines in the three years that I've been here. And in talking with people who's been here longer, we haven't raised, probably these fines with seven, potentially after seven years. And what we're finding is, the low level of the fine is allowing students to really just disregard the rules. Um, and so we're having a lot of repeat offenders, we're having more offenses than we've had in the, you know, previous years. And I'll give you some examples.
Well, I was parked in college, paid fine every day at this point.
Absolutely. Um, in the previous nine years, we've averaged about three hundred traffic site, oh, parking citations per year. Ten months into this year, we're already at four hundred and fifty. So we've, we're at least a third beyond where we were in the previous years, and we got two more months to go. So I believe the parking fines that we're charging now are too low, and that's, that's obviously a safety and security issue. Um, in my agenda though, even more so, are the use of candles in the doors, and the students who like to cover up the smoke detectors in order to do things we don't want them to do in there, so the smoke detector doesn't go off. And those are the two things we're going to talk about from the door perspective. Um, we, we generally average about thirty or so issues with candles in the doors, um, per year. This year, we're on track to get more than that, probably, again, probably forty to forty-five. And again, I mean, the, the, no fine there at all. But one of the things we're also finding is that many of these people are just frequent offenders. And so we need something that will stop them from doing this. I brought a picture just to share with you. This was what we found in one student's room. There's thirteen candles. Um, and in the past, what we've done is we've said, we're going to take these, and we're going to put them in the front of your car. And what they do is, as soon as we go on, they go back to the car and they do it again. And one of the most scary things for me is, we found evidence becoming incidents where they will light the candles, leave the candles burning while they go to class. They'll do all eating. That's just a safety hazard beyond belief. And again, if we're tampering with smoke detectors at the same time, we're in shot at issue. So those are the two things we'd like to help us with, with the doors and the parking citations, we'd like to allow us to raise that as well. And you can see on that next page, what we're asking to be able to raise for them too. Um, and you can also see in that third paragraph on the first page, even if we raise them just much, we are going to be so far below what the other, other institutions are charging out there are, our patriots out there. They're charging as much as one-fifty, two-hundred for candles in a room, five hundred dollars potentially for, for parking violations and heating gas spot. But we're asking for a lot less than they are, and we hope this will be enough to put the students in a position where they will stop offending. Because that's really the goal, is have them stop offending and follow the.
Is there any follow-up about fines escalated? So a candle fine, I mean, to me, you got a little bit, I mean, at least escalate, the fines should escalate. And there should be a point, three strikes and you're out.
And, and I've thought about that for this particular time, we'd like to put the fine in place, because it just is zero. We'd like to see what, what this can do for us. If we start, if we slightly say, you know, you have a fine of X number of dollars, where you have nothing to complain. We, we can finally try to get the point, but if I don't, I don't want to punish these kids for the money purposes. Uh, but I do think we've got a.
The fire hazard deal could risk lives.
Definitely.
And, and it's huge. The parking deal.
Even that, though, in some cases, it's perfect. If you're trying to guard, it's dangerous.
I understand. Fire hazard deal.
I agree. That's some, that's some, I agree.
So I'm going to encourage you to think hard about that. We love, I, just people that's tampering with fire alarms, smoking detectors, all that. Uh, you know, if you think this works, fine, but, but, you know, that's probably a challenge. That's a pretty big deal, just like candles and, you know, everything.
We originally had it higher than what we brought to you in the last, last one. Uh, we were asked to go back.
I'm supporting your recommendation. I'm going to just throw it out there. You need to consider escalating, or real.
We can, we do that in many cases. We already have the escalation fees. And generally, it's second time or third time concerning shooting where the student's out of the building. We got to avoid that.
Will this take effect immediately?
It would take effect if you say, go.
If you have a fire, you kick everybody out, out, person.
Right.
I mean, do, do you have, you might have said this a moment ago, Dr. Parnell, but do you have, um, I mean, any, an increase in the, in somebody tampering with the fire system? I mean, not just the smoke detectors, but anything where we have.
We, we, we don't have a lot of people that are, that are really pulling fire alarms, or doing those kind of things at this point. What we have is more, they are trying to cover the smoke detector, so they make the smoke in the room, or they can do other things, and the smoke detector doesn't go off. We, they, they do that. Um, but we haven't had much of that. In my last inscription, we had a, we had an epidemic of people putting fire alarms. And we had to do this exactly. We had to raise the, the, the fine for, for doing that. As a matter of fact, it was so bad that the fire department started, started charging the college five hundred dollars per trip, that they would have to come out.
Well, like, if somebody was cooking, that, that would set it off, too.
Gary Wilk could set it off, in fact, of course. But now, we, we do have a place in most of our dorms where they can actually cook if they need to. You know, they've got a break room, sometimes they're the microwave. Uh, sometimes they're, it's in the rooms that our adult supervisors are living in, they can use those, those facilities every once in a while, too. So, but, but all the kids who live in the dorm have a meal with that. So they can eat, they can eat and dine.
The last two times the fire department been out here, is not because they were cooking on a stove. They were cooking in their microwave, and they set the smoke alarm off. Apparently, they don't realize you had to put water in your mac and cheese.
Yeah.
You cooked that for three minutes. Fire department came.
Any other discussion? We're hearing motion to, uh, accept the requested increase in dorm and parking fees. Dr. Ross Singer. Gary, not stone seconded. Uh, all in favor? All opposed, same side? Ayes, have it. Uh, we're gonna, at this point, uh, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go, we're gonna table item number thirteen at this time. Uh, and then we're going to item number fourteen, consider and discuss election cancellation for Board seat four and eight. As I, the, there was no opposition in those two positions, I believe. Rick, we're hearing a motion to approve that. Dr. Ross Singer. Stone. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes, have it. This time, we're going to convene the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five dot oh-seven-four, the Texas Open Meetings Act for the following purposes: to deliberate the appointment, enforcement, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline of dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against a public officer or employee. Your motion? Dr. Easton's?
Dr. Ross Singer.
All in favor?